Good evening and welcome to this Planning Commission. The date is January 26, 2015. Thank you very much. First item in the agenda is actually the Pledge of Allegiance. So will everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you very much. May be seated. First item for tonight is the actual approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any corrections or changes that need to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or anything? Okay. Moving on would be the motion for the approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting held on Monday, January 12, 2015. Does anybody have any changes that they need to make to that? Okay. Not seeing any. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the following Planning Commission meeting minutes of Monday, January 12, 2015.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Okay, moving on to public hearings. The first one for tonight is High Point at Riley Creek. The location of this project is 16540 Beverly Drive. The request is for zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 5.35 acres and a preliminary plat on 5.35 acres into 10 lots, three outlots, and road right-of-way on 5.35 acres. And with that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? State your names, spell your last name for city record, and tell us a little bit about your project, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I am Mike Sewell, S-U-E-L, with D.R. Horton Homes, and we are the applicant and developer builder for High Point Second Edition. We are proposing to develop 10 lots on just over five acres of land, just to the west of Eden Prairie Road and south of Beverly Drive. This would be a continuation of development that we had you approve last year of a high point of 12 lots, just just to the north. So we just would like to continue our momentum that we have out there and add these 10 on to the 12 lots that you've already approved. We've seen the city staff report, and we're in agreement with everything there except for the one item where they have us deeding the outlots or requiring us to deed the outlots to the city. We still would like to have a little bit more discussion with city staff to make sure that is the best choice at this time. We have some thoughts that maybe we could combine some of the land in with some of our existing lots, or not some of our existing, some of the proposed lots that we have there, depending on the future outcome of the Prospect Road discussion. And then, we are in discussion with some of the landowners around there about adding on some additional property underneath another addition, and we would like to retain the outlot C in case we do that. But at some point, we do understand there has to be some disposition of the outlots that's agreeable to the city. And I think with just a little bit more time between the Planning Commission and City Council, we can get there.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope.
All right.
Any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
We'll let you know. Thank you very much. With that being said, can city staff take a seat to the report, please?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as the applicant stated, their request is for a zoning change from rural to R113.5 on the subject property, as well as a preliminary plat of the property into 10 lots, three outlots and road right-of-way. You'll note on the table this evening is a Goldenrod annotated agenda for your review. The only change to that annotated agenda is a addition in the recommended motion to include the alternative plans that are located on your table this evening. The original staff recommendation was to approve subject to the information in your staff report and the original plans that were submitted with the packet. The plans that are on the table this evening should also be included in the approval recommendation, or motion rather, so that motion has been modified for your use. Staff does recommend approval subject to those conditions.
Julie, any follow-up comments regarding that one sticky point that was discussed earlier?
Staff has begun conversations with D.R. Horton as of this afternoon when we became aware of the issue, and as staff, I'm confident that we can continue to work through this issue prior to review by the city council. The timing of that, of course, may cause their review by city council to slip a little bit, depending on how long that resolution may take to achieve, but I'm confident that, you know, staff will be able to meet with them in a timely manner and continue to work towards a resolution.
And that was made, you first noticed it, city staff noticed that today. That's when this whole thing came up.
D.R. Horton contacted city staff today to let us know that they disagreed with that particular part of our recommendation.
Got it. Okay. With that being said, commissioners, what kind of comments do you have about this project?
I have one comment.
Please.
With that difference that was discussed earlier, should our motion not include some language to that regard?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the motion that is on the table in your annotated agenda reflects the conditions that staff is recommending at this point. Because staff has not had an opportunity to discuss the issue further with the applicant, that is still our position. Until we have something further to react to and consider, that is still staff's position. In the event that there's some modification that occurs, between now and city council review, staff would alert city council to that change when it moved forward for their review, assuming that the Planning Commission moves it forward as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is anybody else, yes, go ahead.
So there'd be no reason that it would come back to, have to come back to Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if the commission is comfortable sending it forward to the city council, yes, there would not be a need for it to come back. If you wish for it to come back, that is within your purview.
Okay.
I guess that might lead us just to ask, is it worth just understanding the pluses and minuses of those outlots going, being deeded to the city or not deeded to the city, or is that something we should be discussing somewhere else? Because I imagine those pluses and minuses will help us understand, do we want to delve into that further or not?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I can certainly speak to that if you give me a moment to move over to the document camera.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, just to orient ourselves, this is Beverly Drive on the south part of the property.
Can you grab that microphone and pull it down?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just to orient ourselves on the development, this is Beverly Drive, south of the subject property. This is the proposed street that would connect through the property to the north. The two outlots that are of concern by D.R. Horton are Outlot B, which is this little strip right here, and Outlot C, which is this little strip over here. The intent of Outlot C being deeded to the city would just be to ensure that when either the property to the south develops, or the property to the north develops, that Outlot C can be incorporated into that development and doesn't remain essentially a no man's land in the future. Outlot B over in this area is potentially to be reserved for a connection with Prospect Road, because at this point, the exact connection of how Prospect Road would be constructed in the future is not known until the property to the north develops, as to which is the preferred alternative for that construction, or location rather, and reserving this small strip of outlot provides additional flexibility for that.
Mike, would you mind coming forward for one second, please? I'm just curious with that map, if we can put that map back up, and maybe you can go over there as well, Julie. Help us understand a little bit your point of view from that.
Our point of view is with Outlot B is...
Will you grab that microphone and spin it right around? There you go.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you.
Our point of view with Outlot B is that we have purchased this property at some point in our transactions in buying High Point, because this is an outlot to the original High Point. So when we purchased that property, we paid for this land, and at this point, if it's not going to be needed for road, and maybe when we meet with staff, we'll learn that it's still too iffy to make a guess at where that road should go, but if it wasn't going to be for roadway purposes, we'd like to add it into our lot there and gain the value, some more value on that lot by having a larger lot. And then, Outlot C, for our underlying development plan that we show there, Outlot C has to go to the land to the south to meet the city lot area. So if we are able to work with this landowner and come up with some proposal that works for both of us to develop his property, the outlot needs to stay with, to the land to the south to make it conform with the city's rules and regulations. So that's why we're not quite ready there. In the next week or two, we'll know more with the landowner and what he's thinking and what we're thinking, and if we can't make a deal work, we understand at some point they'll probably, could end up with the city for them to try to wrestle who gets it north or south.
Got it.
That's, we're just not ready. And tonight I brought it up because I don't want to just gloss over it, and then we go to the council and say, whoa, we don't want to do that, and everybody goes, why didn't you say something to the Planning Commission? That's just, we don't think that's the right way of doing business. We wanted to make sure you guys were aware of our concerns and what our thoughts are in the developments.
So just to be clear, the first outlet exists because it's a contingency piece of property for road development?
No, it was, it's, there's, right now, there's telephone, gas lines, and electric lines running in there, and it must have been somehow when one of these parcels got plotted off or split off way back when, they bought an access connection to Eden Prairie Road, because it's actually part of High Point First Edition. So it's just been hanging out there for the last year for however, and from before that, however many years. I don't know exactly when it was created. So now, we just want to have a little bit more time to figure out what's the best solution for the property.
So basically, when you, when you folks made the property purchase, these outlots were part of that purchase, and it's hard for you to develop both of them in line with your basic design? Would that be fair to say? I guess what I'm wondering is, why were these outlets separated off? Why do they exist?
Mr. Chair members of the Planning Commission, I'll take a stab at that. When D.R. Horton developed the property that was the original phase of High Point at Riley Creek, there was a underlying parcel that was essentially, you know, significantly sized that was split off, but there was also a parcel that was this long, skinny, narrow strip that connected out to Eden Prairie Road, and that was plotted as an outlot because it was a remnant piece at that point that nothing could be done with. You know, it's not large enough to create a single-family home or anything of that sort. So now, as the next properties are developing, they are incorporating it into this development as an outlot on either side of the proposed roadway, and in this case, or on either side of, one side of the proposed roadway and on the other side of the proposed lots, because it's just not of a sizable size to do anything else with, other than to provide additional property to the, property to the east, or to provide additional area either for Lot Six, if, or additional right-of-way for Prospect Road, depending on what that final orientation is.
Okay, thanks.
And I appreciate the open communication in bringing it up. Thank you very much. Commissioners, anything else before we turn to the audience?
I just have, to go back to my, my original point, should we, in our motion, should there be some slight blurb in the motion that says that this is still under consideration, these two outlots?
Yeah, I think that's probably best. Maybe Julie, as, as we are, yeah, as, well, unless that's, is that the one that's added in there in motion number two?
No, that's why that's added.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there is not language that is proposed in the annotated agenda this evening to take into account D.R. Horton's concern. If you so desire to include something of that sort, you certainly can, just to note that out, there will continue to be some discussion on outlots B and C.
Well, I think, you know, with Mr. Sewell, like he said, being open and honest with this and bringing it up that there is a problem, a slight problem here, I think if we noted it, and then it would not have to come back to us again, but then the city council will know that it was brought up and it is still pending.
Julie, maybe you can work on something while we continue the conversation, and you can let us know what you come up with.
I'll give it my best.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, this is an open public hearing. Is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or concerns about this project? If so, now would be the time to come forward. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody out there. Commissioners, any other, yes, do you have a comment?
I have a question on the future Prospect Road. We've got Prospect Road going west to east, connecting Eden Prairie Road, and then we've got Prospect Road, a draft form or preliminary alternative connection to Cirrus Way. Just wanting to know the history, or not necessarily the history, but, well, for those that might not be familiar with the history, the history of that, and then what the conversations are, because it looks like it'll go over MAC property as well.
Since Julie's busy crafting a motion, I will take this one. Well, it's probably mine anyway, but the reason we have two alternatives is, is to try to not, trying to give alternatives, at least two alternatives, to how to develop the remaining parcels out there. As all these five-acre parcels are developing, it's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle to try to figure out how they're going to develop, how the road connections are going to be done, and to make, because of the grades out here, if we didn't have all these steep grades out here, it probably wouldn't be as a big a deal, but we needed to look at making sure that we could build the roads and not exceed our city standard of 8 percent grade. And both of these, Prospect Road East and West, and if you want to call this Street Two extension to the north, both of them are at 8 percent grade, as well as Cirrus Way. I mean, everything's 8 percent grade out here, and so we just want to provide that when that property to the north does develop, they've got two choices. Either make the road, Prospect go east-west, or cul-de-sac it as it's shown on the alternative plan and, and run a north-south road.
Was there a ghost plat put out by staff, or drafted by staff, that would show Prospect Road and its staff-recommended, proposed, future layout going west to east that would show what the potential, the maximized potential of the future property to the north would be?
Yeah. The submittal that the developer provided shows a Prospect Road alignment, as well as grade, on page, I don't look, there's, oh, page three. And then there's a profile in there as well. What that does is, because of, there's a, an S curve in there, there's a lot of, there's some wasted space, and so in an effort to try to allow some flexibility in the future, that could be done, but there's, again, that would be some, those triangular shapes of those underlying parcels, the dash lines or the parcel lines, there's probably some unusable property there. So if you bring Prospect Road straight east and tied into this new north-south road, it allows for a little less waste of, of land, if you will.
So, yeah, I can see that on page three, or what, two, three maybe here of the, of the project proponent's proposal here. I'm wondering if there is a difference in the layout, well, obviously there is, because the road either goes east-west or goes north-south, so what would be the significant difference in the layout of the potential future development of the rest of the adjacent parcels? I don't see a ghost plat that, that was provided with the alternative north road, like it was provided with the alternative north, sorry, like it was provided with the alternative north road with the east-west road. Because it looks as though there might be some very large lots, and then, I mean, there's some wasted, you know, some unused land, or some less than maximized land in between the roads.
Yeah, the, I guess it's a matter of timing. Prospect Road that's shown on this plan was developed when High Point First Edition went in, to make sure that the grade on Prospect Road adjacent to that subdivision was, was graded and, and the curve alignment set up so that we didn't, we didn't ignore it and then assume that it would work. So we wanted to develop at that time to look at extending Prospect Road all the way down to its intersection with Eden Prairie Road, to make sure that we had a reasonable grade and if it would even work, so, but we did not do a ghost plan on layouts or anything. But as a result of that, you can see some, some kind of triangular and trapezoidal-shaped pieces that are kind of, would be difficult without the lots combining into larger development parcels.
What's the current conversation with the MAC on the area south, or the property just south of Cirrus Way?
We have not had any conversations with them recently, so I know someday they may sell it, but when that happens, we, we're not aware of anything.
Was this parcel, one of the parcels that was a part of the MAC development properties, it was, is it still part of their forecasted development opportunity parcels, or is, or did they remove that from the table?
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the alternative plan, if you will, the one that was handed out tonight, where it shows Cirrus Way and the grades going east and west down Eden Prairie Road, the available land that MAC can sell that's outside of their, their protection zone is about a lot depth off of Cirrus Way to the north. In this case, on this map, it'd be to the, kind of to the left side. So more or less where the edge of that map is, that's probably the RPZ line, relatively close. So they, they do have some ability to sell some of that land that's outside of their protection zone. When they sell that, or if they sell it, I guess that's up, that's up to them.
So the, so the future for Prospect Road connection, either east-west or north-south, the delineation is, is not affected by the RPZ zone?
No. I mean, it's, MAC has all, MAC has additional land to the north of this map that's in the zone that they would not, that they would want to protect, but this is an area where there is some ability to, to sell it and develop that in the future. And so Eden Prairie Road and this whole area is, is at least looking at the possibility of how that would lay out, and how it would be served with utilities and so forth.
Well, thank you for that. I hope our conversation allowed Julie to come up with it.
Yeah, she's got a lot of, a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to bring one other matter to anyone's attention who wants to know, and maybe not, doesn't really affect this too much that I can see tonight, but just because I live not too far from this area and watched as Prospect Road was extended over to Eden Prairie Road during the past several years, and now with more development over there. One of the big concerns the city council had in doing that work, when it was done, which is about five years ago, I guess now, is that the fire protection issues for the development over closer to the airport, Hennepin Village, they had no way, part of Hennepin Village, to get into that neighborhood on the west side of, of Spring Road, nearer the airport, other than coming down, just down Eden Prairie Road and then Spring Road and then in, but they couldn't come in another way, because they couldn't get from Eden Prairie Road, across the creek, and back into that area, and they were very concerned about fire protection. I just know that that's part of the history of the discussion of what happens to Prospect Road, and I don't know if it'll have anything currently to do with anything, because it's already set, it's there now for that particular part of development that's already in place. And it was just something that neighborhood, that neighborhood was very involved with, with the city council back at that time. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Yes, I do remember that. Commissioners, any other comments or concerns before we move on? Julie, you want to take a stab at?
Just one question. Is there a timing issue of, instead of moving something that has a couple asterisks to city councils, is there a timing issue if it just came back in a couple weeks, because it sounded like it was a couple-week discussion?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, a typical timeline, if the Planning Commission were to move this item forward this evening, would be that city council would hear this item at their second meeting in February, because of course, we have public hearing notice requirements that need to go out between now and then. It's quite possible that, that this issue could be resolved in time to address those publication dates. In the event that it's not, then the review by city council would just slip accordingly until we've reached a resolution.
Thanks.
Okay. We're ready.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if you take a look at motion number, move to close the public hearing first, motion number two states move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to R113.5, I'm not going to read through all of it, but I would suggest adding at the, at the end, after January 26, 2015, noting that condition number two C, as in CAT, may be revised as the proponent and city staff continue to resolve issues related to the outlots. So if you note item, rather, condition number two C says that outlots A, B, and C shall be deeded to the city, depending on how the conversations with the proponent go, just noting that that condition may be revised.
Okay. Commissioners, any concerns with that, with the wording of that? Everyone okay?
I don't have a concern with the wording of that, I guess, just put in my two cents. I'm not necessarily, I mean, I can understand and appreciate the proponents wanting to use that property, and I'm not necessarily certain if the city needs to be in the business of buying or being deeded property to them and then reselling it again, so that's just my two cents.
Well noted. Thank you. Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
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 I'll move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to rural one dash 13.5 on 5.38, 3.5 acres, preliminary plat of 3.5, 5.35 acres into 10 outlots, three outlots, and road right-of-way on 5.35 acres, based on the preliminary grading. Alternate connection plan prepared November 14, 2014, plan set, prepared December 2, 2014, and the information included in the staff report dated January 26, 2015, noting that alter, I didn't catch all the wording that you gave, but the wording that you gave, was it alternate?
Knowing that condition number two C may be revised as the proponent and the city staff continue to resolve the issues related to the outlots.
Thank you. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Congratulations. You move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Moving on tonight, we go to variance number 2014-08. The location of this project is 10625 Mount Curve Road. Request is to permit a front yard setback for the parking lot of 14.8 feet and all its closest points. City code allows 35 feet from yard setback, front yard setback. To permit 24-foot drive aisles for the parking lot, city code allows 25 feet, and to permit 10 parking spaces to be eight feet wide, city code requires nine feet. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? State your names, spell your last name for city staff, please, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission, staff, my name is Gary Aulick, A-U-L-I-K, of Aulick Design, representing Olympic Hills Golf Club. The request for a variance is due largely in part to the fact that we've exhausted all other possibilities to improve the current parking condition. There are 172 parking spots in the current lot, none of which are conforming by today's standards. The drive aisles are considerably narrower than permitted by today's standards, and there is no treatment of the storm water that's running off of that lot at this current time. So in the interest of improving stormwater runoff and the safety conditions of the parking lot, we have requested those three variances, which, again, are the, the, I think there's eight spots that extend into the setback from the right-of-way, and it's really only a small portion of any of those spots. We're also... We're also looking for slightly narrower drive aisles by one foot that required twenty-five. We're looking for twenty-four because frankly, we're kind of locked, landlocked between the existing course and the street. And then there are ten parking spots in that proposed parking lot that are labeled for compact cars because they're also slightly undersized. For your edification, the civil engineer that has taken part in developing the storm water runoff program is also here this evening, as is the landscape architect that's been involved in designing the wall and the landscape medium to be placed in and around the retaining wall necessary to create the parking area.
Okay, do you have any other thing to add before we go on to city staff? Not that you need any, but I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I think the only thing to add is that we've, we worked closely with staff for quite some time to exhaust all other possibilities before we landed with this proposed resolution.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'll let you know if we have any other questions. Julie, with that being said, can you take us to your staff, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the proponent stated, there are three variance requests before you this evening. One is for a front yard parking setback, to encroach into that thirty-five foot required setback, as noted on the plans that you have received, as well as the drive aisle width and for the compact car parking stalls that the proponent spoke to. Staff is recommending approval of the variance, subject to the information included in your staff report and the conditions in the proposed final order.
Thank you very much. Julie, I have one quick question. Have we, I don't remember anyone coming to this commission and asking for smaller parking spots or anything like that. Can you think of anything, or some of the other senior staff members that are here tonight, can you guys think of anything we've done before in the past? Commissioners, do you remember of anything? I just don't remember anything.
No.
I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm not aware of any request in the time that I've been with the city for parking stalls that are narrower than what city code requires. Some cities do provide standards that allow for compact cars and allow a certain percentage of their parking lots to include compact car parking stalls. Eden Prairie's does not, but just as an FYI for you.
Right, okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Yes, sir, do you have some?
Well, if I just, if anyone else has comments first.
Oh, go, please, go ahead.
Kind of my take on it, since I was in conversation earlier with staff on it, almost seems like it's kind of a rock and a hard place, this is almost textbook definition of variance requirement, or requiring variance because they're at the maximum allowable, or they're at the minimum allowable size for their parking lot availability. They need more stalls, but the city code requires that they have the center islands and end islands installed, so it's kind of rock to a hard place.
Would you recommend approval of this?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I thought the landscaping, I was, I thought that was, I was quite impressed with that, but the question I had was, there's a, is there a private residence to the, to the side of the cart path, and there are a bunch of arborettes, et cetera? Is that private residence? Are they in agreement with this? Does any of this infringe on them?
Ma'am, the, we did invite all of the residents on Mount Curve to a pre-meeting at Olympic Hills, and we had probably twenty or twenty-five attendees. That party did not show for that particular event. There were others that expressed concern about the wall, the landscaping, and the lighting in the parking lot. We have since erected a mock-up, if you will, of the tiered retaining wall, and we also provided through email a location where anybody that had concerns about the lighting for the parking lot could visit another address in the Twin Cities and see the actual product that we had specified for the parking lot. Beyond that, there were questions about the plantings, but by and large, it's been favorable, but that particular party did not respond.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for the proponent. On that particular, I remember driving down that road at one point in time, maybe last year, late last year or so, and that there was a property that had adjacent to the developer, to what you're trying to do. Was that the property that was for sale? Did it?
Not that I'm aware of. There is a, there is a property that was for sale that was immediately adjacent to a cart path, but on the other side of Mount Curve.
The other side.
From where the clubhouse is.
And I remember there was a.
That one I'm aware of, but I'm not aware of that particular immediately adjacent property being for sale.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Did I follow up? Did you have any comment or concerns after the wood mock-up was placed?
None that had been brought to us directly. I know there's a party in the audience this evening that I greeted for a moment, and I suspect you'll hear from them.
And then, I didn't see a picture of the wall itself. Is it going to be stone, like what's next door at the residence, or is this going to be like keystone, or what is?
The stone will be an engineered product, so it will be, it won't be a keystone product, but it will be an engineered product. The site standard is a, is a dolomitic limestone color, so the wall will be predominantly variegated gold in range, but it's also extraordinarily heavily planted and consistent with the other planting beds that have taken place on the site. No expenses have been spared in terms of developing vegetation and, for that matter, getting immediate gratification. So as I say, the landscape architects here, we've got representative photos of plantings that have been specified for the site. So the view of the wall is going to be dramatically broken up from the view, from the street, and of course, the first tier is also a planting bed, as is the tier above the retaining wall, and there's about seven feet between the top of that retaining wall and the actual parking surface.
Okay.
Then, no follow-up, so the grade of the parking lot is about level with the second story of the houses across the street, correct?
Yeah, the high point of the parking lot is about, you know, it depends on the house, but relatively speaking, the grade of the parking lot is at about eve height of the main floor of the homes across Mount Curve. That varies slightly over the three properties that are directly across the street from the parking lot, because the, the road grade changes slightly, and the height, the houses are all built slightly differently, but generally speaking, the parking lot surface is about even with the eve height or the ceiling height, excuse me, of the main floor of those residences.
And then, so the plan would be, there's a few trees, but there'll actually be more, more landscaping planted if this were proceeded?
Yes, there's several trees proposed in the landscape plan in addition to the trees that will remain, and, excuse me, there are a lot of, a lot of shrubs and plants that are intended for the area at the base, on the first tier, and above the upper tier of the retaining walls.
And then, lastly, this cars will only, there'll be valet spots that are backed in, is that correct?
Yes, the stretch along Mount Curve is designated valet parking, back in only. My experience has been, when designing a parking lot and designating those spots, at least here in Minnesota, people tend to honor that, and by and large, will leave that for the valets. And those ten spots that we've mentioned that are for compact are actually in the very back of the parking lot, the furthest west portion of this parking lot, not the closest to the building. Otherwise, we've done our level best to provide for the largest stalls that we can put in, still get the green space that's required, still manage the storm water, and provide for the widest drive aisles that were practical, given the constraints. Thank you.
One question I had is, how would those spots be identified, or do you planning on, do you plan on identifying on this?
Each one of those spots will have a sign that designates valet parking only, back in only.
Got it. Okay. Commissioners, any other comments before I go to open hearing? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll let you know if you have more questions. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns about this project? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your names, spell your last name for city staff, and tell us your comment, please, thank you.
My name is Edward Getch, G-E-T-S-E-H. I'm one of the three neighbors that lives across the street, directly across the street from what's going to be, or what's being proposed. The thing that bothers me the most is, we're dealing with a golf course with hundreds of acres, and to change the landscape across the street that's been there since we moved in eighteen years ago, with the beautiful trees that they're going to be removing, they keep talking about they're going to be adding trees, but they're very large evergreen trees that are buffering the parking lot that's setback, close to a hundred feet from the street right now. And they're going to move that parking lot within about sixty feet from the street, where there's going to be direct parking with, hopefully, if this goes through, with back in parking. The wall is not going to be a natural-looking thing, it's going to be a wall, eight feet high, and it's going to stand out like a sore thumb, so that the parking requirements that the city is requiring now be met. They're adding islands in the middle of the parking lot for beautification of the parking lot and no other reason. Even your parking lot out here, half of it has no parking islands built into it. They create all sorts of problems for maintenance, but I know you have ordinances, and it takes up all of the extra parking. Those ten spots could be easily met by just removing those islands that you insist on putting, and leave the parking lot basically the same shape it is now. And I've talked to the other two neighbors, one has had a pre, an engagement they had to go to, the wife is sick, and the other people felt that, well, the city hall's going to do what they want to do anyway, so why come to the meeting? So I'm here as a loner, trying to just state how we feel as landowners, looking out at green now and having to look at a wall. So I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, any specific questions? So let me, let me address your question, let's talk to city staff a little bit, see what we can do to help you. Sound good?
I have a harder hearing.
We're going to talk to city staff and we'll see what we can do, but I appreciate your comments, I appreciate you coming tonight.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We're going to talk to city staff.
Okay.
About some of your comments that you made, and we'll let you know, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
I live at one oh-seven-five-two, Mount Curve Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Julie, with that being said, I understand their concerns, what if we didn't put in the islands?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if the request had come into city staff without the islands, then you would be seeing a variance request to vary from the standard requiring a certain percentage of the parking area to include parking islands. So this goes to the point Commissioner Whatkey made earlier about one variance request or the other.
Right. And what would city staff say if we did not put in the islands and there was a request with that kind of a variance?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, without seeing exactly what that would look like and what the extent of those parking, what the extent of the parking area would be and how the parking would lay out, it's, it's difficult, you know, to give you a solid answer without having a plan to react to that includes that. In our conversations with the applicant, as they reviewed various potential scenarios as to how this parking lot could lay out, staff did communicate that a certain percentage of the lot is required to include parking islands, and of course, the purpose of those parking islands are to break up that sea of asphalt and provide a more natural inclusion of that area as much as possible. Of course, that's the intent, as you well know.
Mm-hmm. Can the proponent come forward for one second, please? So tell me your thoughts if we didn't put the islands in, I'm just curious, what your point of view would be.
Well, I think that, though we've never studied it heavily, because we've considered it a mandate to have the green space in the parking lot, and as a part of our formative conversations, that's been a mandate. I think that there are places where, when you go around the corners of the green space, they're radiused, so you can see, if you look at the plan, there, there's radius spaces to make those corners and those otherwise narrower drive aisles. If you put a parking spot there, the corner of that becomes square and more difficult to get around in a drive aisle that's a foot narrower than what the city would normally My initial take on it would be that it would not be impossible to remove the green space and replace it with parking spots, but that it may be, require some considerable reconfiguration to make sure that where we've currently got green space and would be otherwise replacing it with parking, it may be difficult to manipulate the lot.
I know it's, this is kind of a hypothetical, because you haven't explored it as such. Would you still be erecting, I mean, can you envision still erecting that same wall of man-made materials? I mean, would some of that possibly be eliminated, or is that just?
Not realistically. If you're going to treat the storm water, curbing is going to be required, and the way our catch basins are set in the current design, the curbing, of course, is important, and we would no doubt move the parking lot to increase the size of the spaces, even if the green space wasn't there, I don't think we could create a hundred and seventy-two fully conforming spaces with twenty-five foot drive aisles. Without encroaching, I wouldn't know for sure, but the encroachment isn't much now, so it is conceivable that if the green space wasn't there, that we could create the same hundred and seventy-two spaces, there's no question there'd be a retaining wall, it's just a question of where it would be. And to be fair, the course has the right to build the retaining wall on that property, what we don't have the right to do is park the cars in that proximity. I'm quite sure there'd be a retaining wall there regardless. The way we're, the last thing we want to do is create a retaining wall that's eyesore to the club. It's the face of the club. So I'm quite sure that the wall itself will be beautiful, I'm sure the plantings will be beautiful, and it'll be very thoughtful, as you can see by the presentation. Frankly, if we were going to contemplate removing the green space in the parking lot, I'm quite sure we could pick up maybe the seven spaces or so, or eight spaces that are, a portion of which are in that setback, so we could probably eliminate the request for the setback, but I doubt very much we'd be eliminating the request for the narrower drive aisles or the slightly narrower parking spaces. I hope that helps answer your question. It is kind of pushing one variance to another variance, which frankly, we didn't contemplate.
So, just a couple thoughts. From what I understand, the purpose of the parking islands is to make the space look more natural, right? Or to bring some green color to it, something to that effect.
And it also enhances drivability when coming to the intersections between driveline, drivelanes.
Sure.
Because it radiuses those corners. It also gives us, not coincidentally, a great location for our light posts.
Oh, okay. So, so that issue has to deal with how natural and eye-pleasing the parking lot looks overall. The neighbor's issue strikes me as the same kind of issue, in that what I, what I heard from the gentleman a little bit earlier, is that their view's going to go from being pretty natural to being pretty artificial. It's the same kind of issue that those, I mean, it's in the same realm as, as those parking islands roll, from what I understand. To me, if one was a neighbor of the parking lot and my visual was going to go from being very natural to being very artificial, I wouldn't be real happy about that. And so my question is, overall, if you were to get more freedom in terms of the development of the parking islands, with the caveat that we have to do a better job of keeping a natural appearance for the neighbors who have been there for many, many years, could you come back with an approach that would basically improve the? come back with an approach that would basically improve the natural impact of this overall, particularly for the neighbors, and not hurt your planning?
I doubt very much we'd be able to, we, as you may know, or may not, I'm sure staff knows, we've spent a lot of time together identifying alternatives. In fact, one of the alternatives was to place a small parking lot that held 37 vehicles 53 feet behind the 18th green. And for those, I'm not much of a golfer, but I understand that picking the wrong club or getting the wrong wind could put those vehicles and the participants in peril. So it wasn't really a safe alternative, but that gives you an idea of to what extent we've gone to contemplate alternative parking locations on the site. No matter what we remove from the parking lot in green space, I'm quite certain there will be a considerable retaining wall required to get to as close as we can get the requirements of the city in terms of the sizes of the space, the number of the spaces, and the widths of the drive aisles. So we're sure willing to contemplate that, but I think the end result is going to be quite close to the one that we're proposing at this point, with the possibility that the tail ends of those, that triangle that you see that shaded, maybe I should-
Please, go right ahead.
Please, yes.
Why don't you come around the desk the other direction, and then you can speak into it a little bit more. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. The variance for setback is, the setback is delineated by this dashed line. And the spots that are intruding on the setback are this, this dark shaded one, which includes most of that spot, and most of the first, but then segments of the remaining. It is conceivable that without the green spaces in the parking lot, still trying to maintain the right radiuses and inlets and outlets at the intersections, that we could pull this corner of the parking lot back, or at least replace these spots by green space, and not be here, but to get the grade right from the existing parking lot, which is shown here as the gray shaded area. There's no way we'd be able to do it without introducing a retaining wall here. So we might be able to, we might be able to move that retaining wall back slightly, but the overall impact is still going to be a required retaining wall to get the grades right, to capture the stormwater in particular and treat it. There is an underground stormwater solution under the parking lot here that we're working closely with the watershed. And in fact, we're going for a hearing on the 4th of February with the watershed for approval of our stormwater management plan.
Can you just roughly point out where the neighbors are on this map? Are they right across?
Is it this house?
The folks, the folks?
That's right here. Yeah, you're right here. So this is the corner, sorry. I'm going to zoom back out.
Yeah, can we, if we can zoom out, go ahead and stick your finger there again where, where it was.
Their property is here.
Okay.
No? Further down?
There's a car path across the road right there, and we're just up to the right of it.
So not on the paper. So they're here.
And about, where's the wall going again on the map?
The wall starts here, and the second tier appears here, and those two tiers run to here, where it then again reduces to one tier. But in order to raise the grade of the parking lot, that retaining is required.
And what, did you have anything in front of that wall at all?
Yes, there's, there are currently existing deciduous trees that are remaining. There are some existing coniferous trees that are remaining, and these are the coniferous trees near the cart path. These are the deciduous trees and a few more coniferous trees. And Get, get this oriented the same way as what we just saw. In the landscape plan, we're showing the trees that will be removed with large Xs, because these are up on top where the grade starts to drop down to the street, and new plantings are proposed here, 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 here. And we've done a caliper inch study of the trees that we're removing, so it's a balanced removal, and we have managed to spade some 30-foot trees onto this property. So it is possible to put sizable plantings in, in lieu of what's there. The truth is that the survival rate of the 30-foot plantings is considerably lower than that of a 10-foot planting, and to be fair, if you look down the road five years, that 10-foot planting might be healthier and stronger and have had a much better chance of surviving than the 30-foot trees that we've brought in.
Right.
Is that a good representation? Our landscape architect is here. If you have questions for him specifically.
Well, I guess, I, I guess the only thing I'm not completely clear on is, could we do a better job of masking the wall so the neighbors still have a more natural look? And whether that be, I, I'll just let you speak to that. I don't know the answer.
Please, please.
I mean, I think it's a legitimate concern with a large wall going in that, that-
Can you state your name for city staff, please?
My name is David Patton, P-A-T-T-E-N, and I'm a registered landscape architect. I was just chomping at the bit to talk, but the existing five trees that are being taken out are from 14 to 16 inches in diameter. That's the trunk size. And they're blue spruce, Colorado blue spruce. And they're Colorado blue spruce or native to Colorado. And the health of those trees, typically when they, those trees get to the size that they are, declines rapidly over time. So the plantings that we're putting in, that would be-
David, just grab a microphone. If you come around, that'd be great.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So the plantings that we're putting in are selections that are more native. So when we take the, I believe, one of the commissioners, we're talking about taking out the natural or native plants, and then putting in something that doesn't look native. Well, the planting palette of this entire landscape plan is comprised of all native plantings. So the development of this landscape will, one, mask the wall, and since we're just taking out, we're taking out five evergreen trees, and we're putting in substantially more landscape, more than what's required by the city. Just trying to get to, where's the landscape? Where's the lady? There's she right there. So the, sorry. So the landscaping that's, I'm not sure if we can, are you doing it right? So we can just go down the row here. I believe that the person in the audience, their house is actually a parcel that's right here.
Mm-hmm.
Right at it. And this row of plantings here is made up of five-foot-tall arborvitae, and it's a kilometer form that will get to about four feet in diameter, and probably top out about 10, 12 feet in the condition that it's planted at.
And the wall is eight feet, is that correct?
It's two four-foot tiers.
And in this location here, it goes from four feet to zero, though the plantings will be pretty close to the pavement. So any lights that come down here are completely blocked by this. There's also another evergreen tree that's existing right here that's fairly big, even though it doesn't look great. It's like a red pine. There's three spruce, these are Norway spruce down here. They're 12-inch diameter, so they're pretty large trees. Julie, did you include the street views of those trees?
I think I saw it in there, yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yes, the pictures from the street view, I believe, were included in the packet.
Right.
And they, they look similar to this Norway spruce here. There's a person standing here, and they're considerably taller than what's pictured in this illustration. So they do provide quite a bit of screening. But if we keep, if we want to keep going around the corner here, these are deciduous shrubs on top of the wall. They consist of the miscim lilac, and then there's also some yuwanimus, I believe, up here, burning bush. And that's, the deciduous nature of these doesn't provide the screening. It's the trees that are put in down here, so they have one, two, three, four, five evergreen trees. And then, as Gary stated before, a typical tree that they were spading is, is about 10 to 15 feet high. So on the plan here, these are slated to be nine feet high. That's just to meet city code, but also there's a note on there that quantities and sizes of plant materials may increase. But, so you got complete screening here, evergreen screening, and then there's evergreen screening here. There's a small opening right here, and then as we go around the corner, there again, there's a evergreen tree here. This is the end of that cluster. So there's a small opening right here. So you can see the spots that are involved with, if headlights would come out of the parking stalls, there's maybe one and a half stalls here, and then about, I guess, the two stalls on this side here. The stalls in the middle would be completely covered, cover the headlights. And then over here, we have a corner situation. The only reason that there wasn't more evergreen plantings put in here is because we wanted to preserve the 36-inch diameter maple, 26-inch diameter oak, 24-inch oak here. So as you can see, these are substantial trees that we wanted to just stay away from. So in the summertime, when there's the most use of the course, these deciduous trees here will provide cover, because this parking area is up in the canopy of the tree. And then as you get around the corner here, there's a bank of spruce here that's existing, 12-inch diameter spruce, and then we added another Norway spruce on the end of that, just to finish that out. So there'd be coverage here, too. So we have provided a lot of evergreens in the landscape plan, in a, in a large variety of plantings, too, so it's just not the Colorado blue spruce. I mean, we're replacing five Colorado blue spruce that are not native here with a considerable amount of plant material that is native here, so it will do better. And then just to address the parking lot islands, as, I just want to say one thing. You know, the parking lot islands, it's not necessarily to just provide some natural terrain or, in here. As I understand it by city, why cities do this is, so there's a tier of vegetation here, there's a tier of vegetation here, and here, and here. So as you get into the parking lot further, you screen, you have several different screenings of landscape material that would continuously, you know, reduce the visibility of the, of the vehicles in the parking lot. And as Gary said before, they, they're great for traffic control and reducing the amount of fender benders.
All right, thank you.
If you have any other questions?
Well, just quickly, I, I would agree. It looks like you're providing quite a bit. If one were to challenge oneself and say, well, let's try and provide more complete screening, particularly in those areas visible to the neighbors who spoke earlier, how possible is that?
Yeah, we could just take some of these deciduous shrubs in here. And the only reason the deciduous shrubs are placed, this is right on top of the wall, in between the wall and the parking lot, and these species are, they have a higher survival rate in that condition, just because they're a little bit hardier. Lilac is really tough to kill, and the density of the leaf-off condition would also provide some screening during the leaf-off season. So, and then the winged yuwanimus is actually a denser branching plant, but those two plantings were selected because, one, in the spring, you have the lilac scent, and then in the fall, the yuwanimus provides a fantastic display of fall color.
So if I'm understanding your answer correctly, you could provide more complete screening for the area under question here that these folks were concerned would look more artificial?
Yep. Yeah, we can put some evergreens in there.
And is that a pretty complete screening, given the height of the wall, would you say? Once, if you were able to do that?
The screening on top of the wall would screen the headlights. There would have to be some screening below the wall to be more of an evergreen cover for the retaining wall.
I see.
But the retaining wall itself will be covered with other vegetation, like vines and, well, existing plant material. This area here, you won't see this entire expanse of the wall at all because of the existing and proposed plant material. I mean, this, from one corner to the other, will be masked just by the vegetation that's proposed down here.
So you sound to me like you're being pretty flexible in terms of being willing to work to, to more fully screen the wall in the area of concern.
Yep. Yeah, actually, at the meeting that we had with the neighborhood, I asked, I forget her name.
Ed and Nancy.
Nancy. I asked Nancy, what are favorite plants? I mean, we can incorporate them into the planting plan, just like any other plant that I'd suggest.
So, so I think, just to be clear, so you, if, if we had it as a goal that the neighbors would not see the wall at all, could you make that a possibility?
I can guarantee that. I don't know how vegetation is going to grow-
Yep.
... maintenance of it, et cetera.
As far as you-
You will see some of the wall, and, but I don't think the, the wall's going to be a hideous feature, as some people have described it. I was-
Right. And I know that you're putting money into the wall. I understand that. It's not like it's a brick wall that you're putting up. I, I get it, and I thank you for that. What percentage of the wall, in your opinions, would you see?
Well, right now, the way that this is set up, I wanted to illustrate probably 20, 25% of that wall. The rest of it would be covered with vegetation.
Great.
And it's really just to perform, just to have that balance with any, with any design, you need a little bit of balance in it. If you try to mask the wall altogether, it's going to be, it would probably be a more visible feature if you tried to mask it. It's like painting self-lored colored blue. It just doesn't work.
Right.
And I guess the very last part of that question is, is there any opportunity in terms of the materials that are being used, and therefore the look of the wall, to make it look more natural in the context of, I mean, if one screened and one had a more natural or a natural-looking material, in terms of how the wall looks stone-like or whatever, is that another option, or am I crazy?
Well, the, the intent of the wall, the engineered wall form is to match as close as possible the dolomite stone that's being put into the rest of the course. And so, I think the wall's going to look great, but, you know, you always got to put something on it. So that's the whole balance of it. It's a great-looking wall. It's a great looking wall, and the great looking plants. So, uh, the intent of the landscape also is not to have one stagnant cover. So in the spring, you'll have a totally different look than in summer, and then fall will have a different look. So it's, we're trying to use the seasonal change to make it, uh, match the seasons, so.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing is you sound like you're very willing to work with the neighbors
Oh, yeah.
to address the concerns that have been raised.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they look like they're, they're saying, well, I'll believe it when I see it. But I mean, if a, if a good, if a good faith effort is made in that direction, I mean, that's pretty, pretty good of you folks, I think.
Well, I think it'd be fine, so.
So, so there might be a partnership there, working together to, to, uh, address the issues you've raised.
No, please just come forward. Did you understand a little bit about that conversation? Could you hear it okay, that they were talking about?
I, I, I heard
Okay.
almost all of it.
Okay.
It irks me a little bit, uh, this, what they're telling you and what they told us at the meeting that we had at the clubhouse about three weeks ago, um, has varied some. And, um, I understand their position. I'm only looking at it from a standpoint of a homeowner and looking at something natural. And when I hear the words, "We want to break up the parking lot with green and make it look more, more natural", there's nothing more unnatural than an engineered wall. Believe me, it is nothing. It'll look like concrete. It might have spots that are different colors, but it'll be a concrete wall. And they won't be able to cover it up entirely, um, unless they put massive plantings in front of it.
Did you hear the part that they're going to, they're going to cover? Did you hear the part that they're going to cover about seventy-five percent? They believe they can cover about seventy-five percent of that wall?
They have plans, I believe, to put some, uh, vines that will grow and have leaves on them in the summertime. The deciduous trees, um, or bushes won't block the light in the wintertime when they have their parties or their, their get-togethers at night, because there won't be any leaves on the, on the bushes. So those lights will still go through. I'm not as concerned about the lights as my neighbors were, because they get flashed right now with the lights that are going on in the parking lot. I'm more concerned about the wall and how close it is to the street and how high it is, and how it'll really look when it gets done. And once they start, it's too late. So that's why I'm here.
You made comments about what you were told a couple of weeks ago versus what you were told tonight. Do you like the way the conversation went tonight?
Um, they were, uh, opponents for taking out the islands, for instance, and the green spaces in the island. They, they just soon leave it as it is. That's what they told us. And now they say, well, you know, we need to do what we're doing. And it baffles me, with all the land, as I started with all the land that that club has, and even adjacent to this parking lot, on the south side of the parking lot, why they can't make some space for more parking if they have to have it. Utilizing without even going towards the street, going into the golf course slightly, um, why they can't do that? So, you know, it isn't like, you know, they got a, uh, buildings right there, or a lake right there, or some reason, um, why they can't modify the parking lot going south instead of going north.
Right. Okay. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate that. Commissioners, yes, sir, go ahead.
I have a follow-up to what he just said. Couple, was it two years now, I think, two years ago, it came forward for, uh, redoing the complete golf course, completely redoing the golf course. Was this a conversation that staff and you had on the future, uh, potential expansion of the parking lot? And what the two of you had in conversations two years ago in addressing that, that concern of going south into the golf owned property as opposed to...
Well, the perk, to the best of my knowledge, I wasn't involved, nor was David, in the actual design of the golf course and redesign of the golf course, um, nor am I by any means an expert in golf course design. At the time the golf course was redesigned, what I've been told is that the parking lot and remodel of the parking lot was not in consideration. So, once the course was redesigned and underway, in fact, the first opportunity that we had to review the existing parking lot was near the end of this summer, and that, for all practical purposes, the golf course was in and being seeded at the time. So I, I think that to suggest that the parking lot was an afterthought would be overstating it for sure. And I'm not quite sure where Ed came up with the comment that we'd just soon leave it alone. On the contrary, we're here to get the variance because we want to improve the parking lot, because we want to improve stormwater runoff, and we want to improve the safety of the parking lot. This is a sizable economic venture that frankly, we're not obligated to do, but we'd like to do it. There were comments made at the time that the neighbors wished we'd just leave it the way it is. Uh, but, and we have every right to do that, but that's not why we're here. We, we know that half the water in this parking lot goes directly into the storm sewer on Mount Curve. The other half goes directly into a wetland that's on the golf course, that by treating the storm water that's landing in the parking lot, we're going to refine that water before it has an opportunity to get into the ground, and before it has an opportunity to go to the storm sewer at all. The unfortunate truth is, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. We've got Mount Curve on one side, we've got a newly renovated golf course on the other. The cart path that you see is actually in its current location. So we didn't, the golf course didn't extend into the new proposed parking lot anymore than the, our proposed parking lot extends into the would-be golf course. We're kind of locked in between the building, the private residence, the street, and the golf course. And there's, Ed, I, for sure, we spent a bunch of time looking at alternative parking locations on the property, including the location that I mentioned be to, between, behind the eighteenth green. And the, the truth is, we have to meet ADA for all of our parking spots. They, if a handicap party has to come, they have to be able to get to the front door of the club. A lot of consideration was made for the location of the handicap parking spots, and the grade that that party would have to endure to get to the front door, or the new pro shop entry. A lot of thought has gone into making this a safe, environmentally thoughtful, and, and visually pleasing solution. There's a lot of money that's being spent here that wouldn't have to be spent here to make it visually pleasing, particularly from Mount Curve. We think we've done a nice job with that, but if there are other things that we need to do to do a better job of screening your property, which is, which is here from the parking lot, we'd surely consider that. Frankly, I'd be surprised, after the arbors are in here, and, and the plantings that are down below, and some of the existing trees that remain, that you'd see maybe twenty percent of the wall from your lot. But it depends where you're at on Mount Curve.
Right.
as you're passing by, what angle you're going to have between trees, and, you know, to, so to say, I mean, frankly, I'd be hesitant to suggest a percentage of what you'd see of the wall overall, because it's dynamic
Yeah, I understand.
as you're moving across Mount Curve. But I know we spent a lot of time and, and a lot of thought has been given to screening the parking lot, maybe even more than the wall itself, because frankly, we never thought of the wall as being unsightly. And one of the neighbors that lives directly across the street was a, was a party to the event that we had there a few weeks ago, and it was agreed that we'd put the mock-up in front of the property, and it faces his house. And he, he emailed me back and said he thought that the mock-up was very helpful. Those were his words. He didn't say he loved it, or he didn't like it, he just said it was very helpful. So it gave him some insight into what the physical, uh, issues are regarding the wall itself. But I, I, like Dave, I think it adds some diversity to the property. I think that obviously having some planting diversity is also helpful, because you'll get seasonal changes with what we're planting out there. And we're also trying to put plantings in here that are going to thrive. So the idea of having a bunch of plants die and having to replace them seasonally frankly doesn't make much sense to us.
Understood. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any, uh, final comments before we move on?
I have a question. So if I understood you correctly, if you went back and were able to take out the islands and figure out the parking spots, you would still need to build a wall along the setback line, if that worked out, correct? You'd still think you'd need a wall? So, and that would be outside our purview, correct? I mean, they have every right to build a, a retaining wall along the setback line, right?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, the request before you this evening is not whether or not to approve a retaining wall, it is whether or not to approve variance requests for parking lot, or parking stall size, parking setback, and drive aisle width.
Would that be something that would come before the commission?
The construction of a retaining wall in this site would not be something that is reviewed by the planning commission.
So I'm just thinking if, for the residents across the street, if they went back and redesigned everything, they're still going to build a retaining wall, but they could also take the approach where you don't add on all the extra landscaping, correct? And so you could, it would just be a retaining wall further set back with no landscaping, if you wanted to.
Well, that seems like a terrible thing to do to somebody. I'm quite sure we'd never...
Mr. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I, I get it, I appreciate the devil's advocate approach. Uh, I'm quite sure that's something we'd never contemplate, obviously, we want, this is the face of the club. And so whether it's the new signage or any of the landscape that's taking place, this is one of the few areas where the public really views the landscape. But considerable, uh, effort has been taken in, look, some of these gardens that Dave and has designed that have recently been planted on site are just, I mean, they're just unbel, they're remarkable. Uh, and I'm very, having worked with Dave on other projects, and having worked close with the executor that's going to do this execution of the landscape, I'm one hundred percent confident that this is going to be, be a beautiful expression. Would the retaining wall be there regardless? Yes, sir, absolutely. Would it be precisely where we proposed it, without the green space in the parking lot? Most likely not. We might pull it back so that that portion of the wall that's pushing these corners of these spots into the setback likely would not be there. That wall would pull back, and those parking spots wouldn't be required to go into the setback. Again, assuming that we could remove the green space in the parking lot.
Okay. Mr. Rui, you are a much smarter man than I am. And in looking at the plans, you have, Julie, and I did hear you, I understand, I got to ask this question though. Uh, talking about that wall, do you see any other alternatives?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the commission, um, if their parking requirements are such, without putting the parking stalls somewhere else on their property, I think a retaining wall is inevitable here, just because of the gray difference between the parking lot, that area, and the roadway. So it's just a matter of this size and length of it.
Right. Okay. Thank you for your comment, I appreciate that. And Gary, I know that, I believe that you guys have put in a lot of time and energy into this, and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I know we're trying to
For your consideration.
make everybody happy here, but I know that you've got, you know, things that you need to do, um, and I know that you have put time. And I, and quite frankly, the way I see it, um, you guys are putting more money than probably you need to, in making this look good.
Yes, sir, I'm sure that's true.
Right. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, any final comments that anybody has? Commissioner Wiki, you have, you look like you have a comment down there.
Uh, I, I think my only comment would be, um, or my only question or comment, rhetorical question, I'll put it that way. Uh, it, it looks as though there's been some significant effort by the proponent and by staff in liaising with the proponent to try to create a screening mechanism on both light and unsightly man-made features. So you got the back-end features of the parking that's valley-only, back-end-only. You've got screening material, you got the plantings and shrubs that'll be of a certain height and a certain width. I don't know what the permeate, or permeation, is that, permeation of the light that's going to go through there is going to hit the other homes across the property or across the street. The one thing that I would have as a question, I'm not necessarily sure if it falls under the guise of what we're trying to achieve tonight, under what we are being asked. But the question would be, and I think it's a rhetorical almost question, is what type of natural plantings and the height and the density of those plantings are going to be put in the step-back between the wall and then at the base of the first, of the lowest portion of the wall? Because that, that will break up the, the view of the wall. Now, I say that rhetorically because we're being asked on parking spaces. Had this been a PUD, then we'd be able to go back and forth with various plants, this one here, that one there, and all the other. But our vision is so narrowly viewed on what we are being asked. And I think that we've gotten kind of tangentially topic on this wall. However, it's been very good to have that conversation. It sounds as though having the conversation has allowed the proponent and the concerned citizen to be able to come to a better understanding and further dialogue. So I, I think the conversation was not academic, how, but unfortunately, I think our, our hands are tied in looking narrowly on this.
And do you have any final comments?
No, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Rui, that's where we're at.
Would you like it to be broader? Dare I ask?
Ask what you get for, huh? Um, I, I don't, I, I, I just feel as though, I, I, actually, I'll, I'm going to ask the question. What planting materials are going to be put in that step-back and at the base of the, of the natural planting material? Because, I mean, you want to put enough planting material that will keep erosion from this engineered wall, because the engineered walls are not cheap. And, but you don't want to put too much so that you create a, you know, or the wrong type, that you create some sort of problem in the future.
Well, in this setback area, the primary planting will be grass. So there'll be more of grass in that front than there will be large plantings. Because that area between the curb and the wall is predominantly grass. Now, to break up the wall, surely the grass won't do that. But to break up the wall, we're leaving a number of the plantings in place, and then we're augmenting that. The one comment that the city had early in the conversation of the new design parking lot was that we make sure that when the carts come to Mount Curve, that the plantings immediately adjacent to the path don't impair the cart driver's view of the street, or vice versa. And so the plantings that are immediately around the path area as it meets Mount Curve will be subordinate to the, to the cart itself. But actually, Ed and Nancy's view of the parking lot will be predominantly screened by existing large plantings, twelve, twelve inch cedar, fourteen inch cedar, twelve inch, uh, Norway spruce, twelve inch Norway soos, twelve inch Norway spruce. That's a lot of trees in that little area, plus the arborvitae, a thirty inch oak, twenty-six inch basswood. The other thing to consider, which is probably hard to visualize right now, is that by putting the retaining wall in and raising the grade of the parking lot, where now the headlights of vehicles are kind of pointing down toward the buildings on the opposite side of the street, by bringing the grade up, those headlights will not be pointing at the front of those houses at the main floor, they'll be pointing at their roofs, uh, to the extent headlights will reach that far. The other comment that was made regarding the, the lighting in the parking lot itself, the type of light, light that has been specified is an LED light which has amazing, um, flexibility. So the amount of light it produces and the shrouds that come, that are readily available for those lights will absolutely screen, uh, any light pollution from getting to Mount Curve and surely beyond. And I see that one of the recommendations from staff is to make sure that we're at... And I see that one of the recommendations from staff is to make sure that we're at half candle power, at half-foot candle power, and that will be easy to reach, utilizing the product that we've specified for the parking lot itself. So, light pollution won't be an issue from the parking lot either.
I don't see that light pollution is per se the issue that the, Mr. Gesh, right? Yeah, that Mr. Gesh was addressing, it was the unsightly nature of something that is not existingly natural. An engineered wall is going to be made of something that came from the earth, so, you know, it's natural components, for the most part, that are visible. The question is, is how can we break that up? And we have the same discussion when we come through T.O.D. ordinances and town center ordinances, how can we break up the nature of a continuous-looking facade? And I think that you mentioned that grass is going to be at the step, and then, now I'm assuming that's mowable grass, or is that natural prairie grasses that?
It would be turf. It would be mowable grass.
Mowable grass. A suggestion that might be able to be pondered here would be, instead of mowable grass, being the fact that you're going to have to get a mower down there now, you can use natural grasses that will help with the permeation of stormwater, and water that runoff off of that retaining wall. Now, the retaining wall, the stormwater, I'm assuming that it's piped to go down into that mowable area, well, you could incorporate within that, on the step and down below, a infiltration-type system with natural grasses that stand like four, six feet high, some of the blue stems, and, you know, I mean, you're a grass expert, I would, you know, so you know better than I.
I think your original question was, what's the plant material vegetation between the two walls?
Yeah.
Or at the bottom. So, between the two walls, in plan, it's just specified as assorted perennials and annual plantings. So, that's really big. So, that's why this board illustrates, you know, each one of these is kind of a rectangle that illustrates the plant material. So, of the named plants that are specifically illustrated, or pointed out in the plan, they, they end right here. So, these are the only plants that are named or specifically placed on the plan currently. The rest of these plants make up the perennial plantings that are illustrated on the plan by the hatched areas. So, these are not specifically placed on the plan, because when they are designed on site, I want to make sure that they're site-specific to the height and massing of the plant. So, when the design goes forward, we do have several plantings, native grasses that are taller, some of these liatruses are very tall, and a lot of these cone flowers will probably be two-thirds of the height of the wall. But the makeup of that, or the design of that, is actually done in the field, so that the undulation, or the design of those plants is done on site. So, the intent of that is to enhance the look of the wall, and to make sure that the seasonal changes are varied, are varied all the way down the length of the wall. And then also, another thing about the perennials is that, you know, some of these spots, as we talked about before, it's not a stagnant look at the, that small section, it's a continuous drive-by, if you will. So, where these plants are placed, the largest, most impactful perennials will be placed in the most visually, or the most visible areas. So, I guess it's kind of hard to explain the design process, but the intent is to mask or balance the wall and the plantings with the seasonal changes that the plantings give. Because, I mean, unlike a built component of stone, or stucco, plant material is always varying. So, when the plant material goes in, there's going to be about three years until it matures. So, you have to have that visual knowledge when you're doing the design on site, in order for it to look good three years from now. So, I know it's not specified exactly what it is, but that's why this board was provided, is to kind of illustrate the plant material that would be used in that area, just to illustrate the diversity of the plant material. And then also, some of the different aspects of the material, like the Boston ivy, which you can see covers entire building walls, the Engelmann ivy, the climbing hydrangea. Some of these moss flocks actually come over the top of the wall, and some of these other plantings, ground covers, that will help mask the wall, even this, well, this is labeled wrong, this is a juniper, not a autumn blaze maple, sorry about that. This also comes down over the wall, it's actually an evergreen, so that will provide some of that breakup of the wall, too. But short answer to your question is, this will be between the two walls.
Was this graphic available to the residents during the neighborhood meeting?
Yep. We sure had it there.
What kind of response did you receive from the neighborhood residents that attended?
I don't recall any specific comments to any one of the plants. It was more of a, while there's a lot of plants. That's why I asked, if you have any favorite ones, we can slip it in. I mean, there's plenty of colors. What's that?
Ma'am, can you?
We haven't seen the wall.
Okay. Well, maybe you want to suggest larger plants. Like we said, we're willing to work with them on whatever they're looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, are you ready to move forward? Okay. Great. I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second all in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, we recommend approval of the final order, 2014-08, based on plan-stamped dated January 20th, 2015, and the information included in the staff report dated January 26th, 2015.
Second.
Motion, second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you can move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Thank you for the good discussion.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, Julie, we got a little bit off track, but we're going to get us back here. And I understand the last public hearing is done by the city itself, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
So, let me announce it. So, the next, the next item on the agenda is the PUD amendment for the apartments at City West. This is done by the city of Eden Prairie. Location is 6418, 6425, and 6435 is City West Parkway. Request is for plan unit development amendment with waivers on 13.5 acres, zoning district amendment on 13.5 acres. And with that being said, Julie, take it away.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, City West Apartments received approval for its project back in 1985. As a part of that approval, the project did meet the city code requirement for onsite parking stalls, or parking lot parking stalls, and then also enclosed parking stalls. As a result of the Shady Oak Trail that is being constructed in that area, additional easement area is being obtained by the city for that trail, and as a result, it may impact a net loss of five parking stalls on that site. The applicant has requested that the city pursue a PUD, an amendment to the PUD to reflect that potential change. The property owner is looking into alternatives to relocate those five stalls on site, but they haven't finalized a proposal yet at this time, so they are asking the city to amend the PUD in order to have an approval that is in conformance with the city's process.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns about that? Yes, yes, sir.
Would it be a fair assumption to say that perhaps in the future, we might have another conversation about parking stall, PUD waiver requirements on this? If they're going to relocate, or try to make up their spaces?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the way the language is crafted in this report, it would allow for up to a maximum of five parking stalls to, it would allow for the approval to, allow for a net loss of five parking stalls. If they're able to relocate those on the site, then they're still in compliance, they would actually then exceed the requirement if this were approved. If they're only able to relocate two or three of them, they would still be in compliance. It allows them some flexibility moving forward.
So, it allows for a net loss of five parking stalls in the future?
Correct.
How many parking stalls? Are they losing five parking stalls right now?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, from the drawing that city staff has prepared and worked with the property owner on, that would be the maximum net loss, is five. Seven parking stalls are impacted, two have been relocated on the site, five are potentially a loss if they're not able to relocate them elsewhere.
All right. Very good. Commissioners, anything else? Julie, any final comments at all?
Just one question. These are just, these are visitor parking mostly? Are they assigned spots?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't know that this particular property has assigned visitor parking or not. I know in conversations with the property owner, they're not concerned about losing five parking stalls. So, whether they're taking into account vacancy rates, or the fact that some of the units may only have a single vehicle instead of two, they've not expressed a concern in the potential to lose five. Their main concern is just making sure that their approval is consistent with what they have on the ground.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody okay? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion. Actually, let me, I know there's nobody here, but I have to do with my own peace of mind. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns? Okay, not seeing, there you go.
Before I make my motion, I might, just clarify my question, I just want to make sure that we are giving them the opportunity to make sure they're, make back their five, five stalls in the future. All right, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move motion, second all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Move to recommend approval of the PUD amendment with waivers on 13 and a half acres, and zoning district amendment on 13 and a half acres, based on plan-stamped dated April 22, 2014, and the information included in the staff report dated January 26, 2015.
Second. Move motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Julie, you can move forward with your project. And with that being said, we'll move on to the planners' report. Are there any planners' report for tonight?
Mr. Chair, no.
Okay. Any members' report? Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.